Good evening, Tom. Good evening, Ken. Brett?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Looks like we're just about at time. Let the computer click over. The slowest moving clock in the world when you're watching. There it is. All right. We have everybody. So we'd like to welcome everyone to the adjourned city council meeting of April 26, 2021. Temporary public comment email established for the city of Los Banas. You can send email comments from public forum to cityclerk@losbanas.org. Or you can send a hard copy or drop off a hard copy at 520 J Street. Emails have to be 250 words or less, and they will be read during the meeting at the appropriate time. And so now we will call the meeting to order, and we will ask Police Commander Reyna to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Hello, Mayor. Commander Reyna's not with us at the moment. I will give the orders.
So let's ask Councilmember Yamas to lead us. Our Marine.
Very well. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Yamas.
Thank you, sir.
And now we will go to roll call. Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Present.
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Yamas?
Here.
Correa?
Here.
We have a quorum. Now we'll move. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert here. I would like to make a motion for consideration of approval of agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Mayor Portembois to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. Public forum. Members of the public may address the city council on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. The public may submit their comments by submitting a written statement and dropping it off at the utility payment box at City Hall 520 J Street. They send it by mail or email it to cityclerk@losbanas.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the city council meeting. Ms. Melanie, do we have any comments for the public forum?
I've received no comments.
Thank you. Seeing no comments, we will move to item six. We are to conduct interviews for the selection of an executive search firm to assist the city council in the recruitment of a new city manager. And this will involve City Council Resolution Number 6360, authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement for city manager recruitment services. And for that, we will go to Ms. Melanie, will you be introducing the the search firms or will I?
I can bring them into their room and introduce the firm, and then each firm will introduce themselves.
All right. Thank you very much.
So if you all are ready for the first one, may I bring them in?
Council ready to go? Bring them on. All right. Thank you.
Hi. So the first firm we have up is Bob Murray and Associates, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Valerie Gata Phillips. I'm the president of Bob Murray and Associates. And I believe my husband Gary Phillips was listed on the proposal. And we're pretty much interchangeable, but I'm on the call today because he actually is in another council meeting working on a few city manager recruitments down in Orange County. So I'm excited to meet with you today. Valerie Gata Phillips, owner of Bob Murray and Associates for the past, I'd say, a little over seven years. I always like to introduce myself as Bob. Worked for Bob for about a year and a half before we bought the firm. So my husband and I own the firm together. Like I said, a little over seven years, conducting city manager recruitments, CEO recruitments, executive director recruitments, GM, you name it, and for municipalities, state and federal searches, as well as nonprofit. And we've done a little bit in the public sector as well, since we both came from the public sector. Latina-owned business, where there's about 10 of us. We're located in Roseville with a recruiter in an office in Walnut Creek in Concord and another one down in Glendale. So I'm excited to answer any questions that you might have today. I don't want to drone on about myself, but I will say that I did see something on your website that caught my attention. I think it was a fire department having, is there a parade for Autism Awareness Month?
Yes.
Okay, I was really excited to see that just because that's something that's personal to me. I have, my youngest son has autism. So kudos to the city for doing something so amazing.
Thank you.
I'm here to answer any questions or I can go through process or I just, you know, I want to just make a quick introduction and not take up too much of your time. I know you've got three other firms that you're talking to, so.
All right. Well, thank you. We do have questions, and each council member has submitted a series of questions to ask. And we'll go to each council member, and they will go through and ask their questions. And we'll start with Councilmember Jones.
Yes, hello. Tell me about your tell me about your candidate sourcing strategy. What do you find has the highest success rate of job placement? And what performs? Or what, I'm sorry, what platforms bring the most applications?
Okay, so I touched on this briefly, that my husband and I came from the private sector. And I bring that up because I was a headhunter for startup companies, pre-IPO companies, public companies, you name it. Yahoo, Oracle, all those types of companies. And I bring that up because I think that's what sets us apart from our competitors, all really good firms. But we're, you know, headhunter used to have a really bad kind of connotation to it, like a meaning, and I don't really see it that way. You want a headhunter. I've had to learn to be very aggressive when I was a recruiter in high tech. You had to be. You couldn't just place ads and wait for people to apply. So I think that's the difference since we've taken over Bob Murray and Associates the past seven years, is that we're pretty aggressive recruiters. Yes, we place, we all place ads in the same place. You know, ICMA, Women Leading Government, Local Government Hispanic Network, INAPA, CCMF, National League of Cities. We all place at careers in government. We all place ads in the same place. You could talk to any of these search firms, and they're going to probably give you the same list of sources that are going to place ads. And that's great. It's not a waste of time. You know, we do it on LinkedIn, Facebook, all kind of the newer social media sites as well. But it's the outreach. So what sets us apart? Well, we have probably over 40,000 folks in our database. Now, are they all city managers? No. There's a lot of them that are up and coming. There are some that are current city managers and some that are retired. And I say that because they're just, it's all about networking and making those phone calls. We literally, every time we take on a recruitment, whether it's a city manager, a GM search, or community development director, we pull names from our database. We have help lists. And we literally target those folks that we're going to call. And we kind of work as a group. So we're usually partnered with another recruiter. So it would be Gary and I. So this, you get the two owners of the firm. So we sit down and we kind of, we're one of those boring couples that lives and breathes recruiting. So we're talking about it even on the weekends. But, you know, when you love what you do, that's not, that's not a bad thing. So we literally put together a targeted list of those that we're going to call. And we have probably conducted, I think, over 60 city manager recruitments in the past six and a half years. So we have a really good pool of potential folks that we would be calling. Does that mean your next city manager is going to be in that group? Maybe not. But it's just a good way to say, who do you know? Who's someone who's seasoned? Who's someone who's up and coming? And I won't know exactly what it is you're looking for unless we're selected and we do the kickoff meeting. So Councilmember Jones, that's really kind of our approach, is really targeted phone calls. We place all the ads like everyone else does. We really utilize social media, big time. I think we're one of the best firms at it. You go to LinkedIn, go to Facebook. We're all over it. And we get a lot of feedback from candidates as well as clients saying, wow, you guys are really active on social media. And that's important because we've got over 25,000 contacts on social media, and most of those are government. And so, and it's nationwide. So it's, you know, you're kind of getting all of these extras, I think, with us that you may not necessarily get with another firm. And that's kind of our outreach approach. We would provide the list of places where placing ads, if the council wanted to see that. We provide weekly updates of this is how many applicants we've received. This is the kind of feedback we're getting. I think communication is key, back and forth. But we're really aggressive recruiters. And so really, that's, you know, that's our outreach. We do mail out the brochure, just like everybody else does. We'll probably send it out to about 300 potential applicants. Most of the target will be California, but it is a nationwide recruitment. So that's a little bit of our approach. Hope that answers your question.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones. You had a couple of others there as well?
You're on mute.
There we go. All right. How many recruits did you place in employment that did not work out for the employer and/or did not fulfill the timeline of their contract?
That doesn't happen too often. Honestly, it just doesn't. I think all firms, we all have had that happen, where, you know, sometimes you'll bring a client, and I know that, I'm not going to name the city. I know this happened a couple of years ago for recruitment that Gary worked on, where they selected the first time city manager, and it just didn't work out. They had some council changeover, and it was highly political. And he was very, I think he's a great candidate. He's now in ACM, doing very well with a much, much larger city. So it does happen to give you a percentage. It's not even one out of 10 that that happens. So it rarely happens, but it can. And what ends up happening in that situation? Let's say we have three candidates that the council's looking at, but they've selected one. But we always try to find out from a client, okay, we can't close the deal with this candidate. What are the odds of you voting 5-0 for the second? The second in place? You know, so we try to really vet all of that out in advance, or we reopen the recruitment. Now, that has happened, but it doesn't happen too often. We're, it's funny, we're seeing more of that type of stuff happening, I'd say more recently. But I think it's just the political environment right now seems to be pretty divided in certain regions of California. We're doing a lot of work down in Orange County, and it seems to be really divisive down there. And so it makes it tough for city manager recruitment because you can bring six phenomenal city managers, but when you don't have council agreeing and agreeing to disagree, that really impacts the recruitment. So we never fall down on the job in bringing great candidates. It's up to the council and making that selection and being in agreement. We always try to encourage a council to, even if it's not the candidate that you necessarily wanted, but to make it a 5-0 vote in favor of your new city manager just because it sends such a positive message of support. And it looks good to the constituents as well that you're supporting your new city manager. I don't know if that answered your question.
It does. Thank you. The last one I have is how do you measure your success to match a potential employee with an agency?
Okay. Well, a happy client, happy, happy client, happy candidate equals happy recruiter. So that, you know, every, every client's looking for something a little different. But really, it's funny, I can sit down and tell you, okay, I'm with this city, this city, or this agency, and this is what they're looking for in their next leader. And everybody has the same or similar soft skills. And so it's our job to go out there and kind of bring you that unicorn. And we're really good at that. So we want to make it a tough decision. Like I said, and the reason why it's nice if it's a tough decision is that if we can't, for some reason, close the deal on the first candidate, you're more than happy in saying, okay, well, you know what? Let's make an offer to the second one because she's just as good. So it's really being able to check off all those boxes. When I bring you six candidates that I'm recommending, and you're like, wow, these are all very different, but they're all, I can see why you brought them to us. Because, you know, she's got this, this, and this, or this person. I think once we've done the kickoff, we'll get a better idea of what it is you're looking for in your ideal candidate. And so I'll know when I'm calling folks. If you're looking for somebody who's more of a change agent or somebody who can really develop and mentor staff, or somebody who kind of needs to come in and clean house or, you know, finish a general plan or whatever it may be, that's what we'll be looking for.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I feel like I'm giving you really kind of up in the sky answers. So if you need me to drill down more, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Now we'll move on to Councilmember Lambert.
Good evening, Valerie.
Good evening.
So my first question is, I have read your recruitment strategies. I want you to give me one of your good reasons why we should go with your firm.
Okay, I think I listed off a few, so you want me just to list one? We love what we do. And you're going to say, well, what does that have to do with anything? When you hire somebody who loves their job, you're going to get the best. And so I feel like, I'm not kidding when I say, my husband and I are kind of nerds when it comes to recruiting, and that's all we talk about. You know, we're one of those boring couples, but we love it. And so I think when you, we have the passion for what it is that we do. I think the results speak for themselves.
Thank you very much. And my second question, what do you feel is your top marketing strategy? And could you give me an example?
So if you're looking for, you know, all of our recruitments, I always say that it's an inclusive process, and it's a nationwide recruitment. But we're going to try to bring you the most diverse qualified group of candidates. And what does that mean to your city? I would find that out in the kickoff meeting. But it's important to me, one of my strategies is really tapping into our network. And we're very, we're sponsors as well as members of CCMF and ICMA, Women in Government, Women Leading Government, Local Government Hispanic Network, the INAPA, which is the Asian Professionals. I'm also on the Committee for the National Forum for Public Administrators. I think I would be doing you a disservice if I didn't bring you a diverse pool of candidates. I think that, you know, candidates need to reflect the city. And so my job is going to go out and find the best candidates, a diverse pool of candidates, and bring those to you. So my strategy is really being very targeted on who I specific, what organizations I can tap into to find out who would be interested in this opportunity.
Thank you. Last question. Have you ever missed a projected timeline?
No. Haven't missed a projected timeline. But I will say, and I don't think, I don't know that this counts as that, is that we have extended a timeline where, let's say, for a recruitment, not necessarily a city manager recruitment though, but let's say it's a CFO recruitment, and we received 30 applicants, and I'm only seeing about three really good candidates in the pool. I may work with the city manager or the hiring director and say, look, we've got three really good candidates, let me vet them out. But I would say, let's leave the search open and see what else we get. Let us be a little more aggressive with social media and see if we can get anyone new in the next couple of weeks. That we have done. That doesn't happen for city manager recruitments, but that has happened for department head level positions. And I bring up CFO because that's really the one that's the tough one these days, is finance, finding really, really good finance people. A lot of them are now city managers.
Thank you very much, Valerie.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lambert, Ms. Phillips. Now we'll move to Councilmember Mayor Portembois.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Valerie, thank you for accepting our invitation.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. My first question is, how strong are your agency's internal employees? An example would be, do you practice what you preach? Do you invest in employment development and certification? Are the recruiters experienced in their field?
I've never been asked that question. I love that. And you know what? I love that you asked it because I tell people, go look at our website and compare us to, so I'm not going to name the firms, but look at other firms. I think, when I talk about diversity in our process and bringing diverse candidates, you look at our website, and I feel like we walk, we walk the walk. We have Latina, an Armenian, and so two women, and then a police chief. So when I bought the firm, it was all white males for the executive recruiters. And the internal staff, well, there was only a couple of them. So, and again, all white, not that there's anything wrong with that, but I felt like we needed to bring that diversity within the organization. So we've done that. I think it's a really good mix. When you ask about training and, and I think we believe in work-life balance. There isn't anything that Amber or Sky wouldn't do or Jeannie come in on the Saturday if we needed them to. We pay for them to attend conferences, bring their dogs to work, they bring their babies to work. I think that's a little bit of our high-tech bringing up is because we did that when we were in high-tech. So it's just felt natural to do that here. I think we're small boutique firm, very family oriented, and we just planned our holiday party for this August since COVID kind of took that away from us. I think we just hired a new recruiter, and she's a retired city manager from the city of Glendale. And she had opportunities to go with our competitors, and she chose us. And I like to think that it's because of, it's not the pay. It's because of who we are and our reputation. So I really feel, and we, we're really involved to do the Walk for Autism. That's why I mentioned to the mayor, I was really excited to see the parade. We do the Walk for Autism and Special Olympics. And so I feel like we give back as well. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much. My next question is, how many candidates do you normally screen for the position of city manager?
Anywhere from 12 to 14 is what we're seeing. It slowed down a little bit last year. In fact, we had some city manager recruitments get put on hold when COVID hit and then waited till after the elections. But usually about 12 to 14 candidates. And we'll get maybe a total of anywhere between 25 and 40 applicants. It just depends on the position, location, how the city's doing, what the pay looks like compared to the surrounding area. But usually about 12 to 14. And then what we end up doing is recommending anywhere between six to eight candidates. But we usually will discuss all the ones that we've screened. And then you get the opportunity to see the resumes of everyone who's applied.
Thank you. And my last question is, can your agency back up their claims about work quality? Example, if you give us subpar talent, it hurts your business and it hurts, it hurts us as well.
Right. Well, like I mentioned earlier, you know, a happy, a happy client and a happy candidate equals a happy recruiter because then you'll be our next reference. And, you know, customer, it's all about customer service. Gary and I are the types that, you know, council members and usually have our cell phones. That's good and bad. You know, we could be on the phone 11 o'clock at night in a closed session or just talking to the mayor or a candidate. So I don't, we don't see that as a chore just because, like I mentioned, we love what we do. So it's just a natural thing. Customer service is really important to us. And I feel like, I think Bob did a really great job when he owned the firm. I think he was kind of a legend in his own right. And I think we took what he built and took it to the next level. And I think we did that because of our customer service. We're available, we're, we communicate on a regular basis with our clients so that you don't know, hey, what's going on with the recruitment? I don't think there's anything worse than not knowing what's going on with your recruitment. And if there's a point of contact, that's what we're giving our updates to. Like, hey, we just, we have, you know, 14 people who have applied, and it's only been open two weeks, you know, and it looks like there's some interesting folks. We can't necessarily share the names until we go into like a closed session. But at least you'll get an idea of the feedback and the types of applicants and, you know, then the amount of applicants applying. So if you're happy at the end of the recruitment, you're going to be a fantastic reference for us. And who doesn't love a great reference?
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, then?
Yes, I'm muted. I hit the cough button. Pardon me. Thank you very much. Now the face actually has a voice. We'll move on to Councilmember Yamas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mrs. Phillips.
Good evening.
My first question is, what are the three most important qualities you look for in a candidate for city council or city manager?
Well, you know, that really varies depending on the, on the client. But I always think integrity is really important. Transparency. And I know that's a word that gets thrown around quite a bit, but I do think that that's important, especially now in this day and age. Like I mentioned, council's being very extremely divided. So I think transparency and an effective communicator. I mean, that's two words, but those are some of the things I think we look for, you know. There's more I could throw out, you know, leadership and, you know, experience. There's more I could throw out, you know, leadership and, you know, experience, but definitely integrity is one of the first things that jumps out to me. And when we're interviewing candidates, it's, you know, we have our set questions that we ask, you know, potential city manager candidates. But I think what Gary and I do well is, it's not just an interview, whether it's in person or Zoom, we do have some set questions, but we're also just trying to have a conversation, because we're trying to get a feel of why this person's interested, what's happened in their past, and to get somebody to be able to relax and talk about themselves. Sometimes they say things that are like, ooh, that was a big red flag, because we've gotten them to disarm them. And I'm not, it's not like I'm trying to get them in a gotcha moment, it's not that at all. But, you know, as we get to work with our clients, and if it were you, the city council, we're gonna get the feel of who you are and what you're looking for, and what your style is. So when we're interviewing candidates, we're trying to get a feel, is she gonna be a good fit? She's got all the technical skills, but is she gonna be a good fit with this council? And we will move forward a candidate, but we will give you that kind of feedback, like, yes, she's done this, this, and this, and this, but this is her style, and so it'll be up to you guys to figure out if she's a good fit, because we can't pick the fit. No, we just wanna bring you the best, and you guys make the selection.
Thank you. Second question is, between experience and education, which do you consider more qualified?
Well, for city manager recruitment, you know, most of the positions we recruit for, the minimum qualifications does require a degree, and usually an MPA or MBA. Not mandatory, it's highly desired, but so, that's a tough question, and I feel like, you know, you need a combination of both. So I don't know that really answers your question, but a lot of, if your job description's really based on minimum qualifications in the sense of a degree, then that's what we're gonna be targeting. I would say 90% of the city manager candidates we get applying for positions typically do have their master's degree. But that doesn't make them qualified. I've interviewed some people that they have their MBA, but I would never present them to a city council because of their experience, or their demeanor, or style, or to me, what I think is lack of integrity. So between the two, it would really be dependent on what you guys are looking for. I could interview someone, and they may not have their degree, but they have the right experience. I will bring forward that candidate.
Thank you. My last question is, more to get a feel, is why did you choose this line of work?
Well, it started in my, probably my mid-20s as a recruiter, and I don't wanna say how long ago that was, because that'll really age me, but it was high-tech recruiting, so C-level, CEO, CFO, CIO-level searches for pre-IPO companies as well as public companies, and I loved it. And then I had babies, and moved to Sacramento area, and just did a little bit of that on the side. And then I, more recently, was doing onsite recruiting, and then met Bob Murray, and that was, this was a different niche for me, and I fell in love with it. So, I'm a people person, and so is my husband, and so are our recruiters and our staff. So I really love meeting people. We sponsor so many, COVID's been hard, been really hard for us, because we sponsor so many events and conferences, and we attend them, we set up booths. And we haven't been able to do that for the past year, so I'm excited to find out. I think the ICMA conference is happening, and it's gonna be in Portland, it was supposed to be in San Diego. I sit on a lot of committees, mock interviews. I do that for GFOA for finance. It's a great way to meet future finance directors. I sit on it for Local Government Hispanic Network. I just did it for Women Leading Government and How to Negotiate Your Compensation in a Contract. I spoke to How to Interview via Zoom, video interviews for COVID. So I feel, if I didn't love what I do, and Gary didn't, we wouldn't be doing that. Gary just spoke on what city councils are looking for in their next city manager at the Fresno State MBA program. So, we do a lot of that, so it's not just the recruiting piece, which we absolutely love, but it's that giving back and cultivating those relationships with the next wave of talent. There's a lot of great city managers out there who have, you know, 10, 15, 20 years of experience. A lot of those are baby boomers, and they're retiring now. So we've really done a great job in cultivating those relationships with the next wave, which is the ACMs, or, you know, new city managers. I think that's really important, especially, you know, for our firm to be successful and for our clients to have a really good pool of candidates to choose from.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I have two questions for you. Excuse me, mine are a little more targeted to Los Banas. And first one is, how would you tailor your search for a candidate to fit the needs to Los Banas?
So, I think that's where the kickoff meeting is really important, and finding out from you. Of course, I would wanna meet with each one of you individually, to get a sense of what you're looking for in your next city manager, maybe what the culture is like, what do you see as the issues? I mean, I took a look at the website and some things going on, but you know, I didn't do a deep enough dive to see what, if there was any negative, you know, and that would be something that I would want you to share with me. It's not that it's gonna go on the job brochure, but it's helpful for me if I get a candidate asking me. Now, I would conduct a nationwide recruitment. I think that's important. You guys are, where you're located, the cost of living is in your favor. Bay Area cities, and like Orange County cities are really hard to attract folks who are outside of those areas. I don't think that that'll necessarily be an issue for you guys. I mean, it's still California, and it's still expensive, but being able to find out who are the stakeholders? Who do you want me to meet with? Do you want me to talk to the executive team? Do you want me to talk to, you know, Chamber, or any other, you know, developers, anything like that? That's gonna be on you guys to tell me, okay, Valerie, we want you to have a town hall meeting, and we've been doing that via Zoom, just to get input. I always recommend Survey Monkey, that the city, and it just costs nearly nothing to put out. You put out a survey, and with cities that have utilities, sometimes they can stick a card into the bill and stuff like that. It's just much more inclusive, and then the constituents, you know, your folks feel like you're being inclusive in the process. And I think that sends a really important message. So we conduct stakeholder meetings, whether it's in person, it's been tough doing that with COVID, but we've been doing them Zoom. I always recommend like some type of survey, knowing you put a deadline on the survey, and the results come back, we tell our clients, post it on your website, so that everyone can see it. You know, you can go through it and make sure there's no names in there, or anything, any bad language or names in there that are specific, and then you post it to your website. That's a huge thing for councils to do, and we recommend that. So getting the input from stakeholders, from you guys, and what it is you're looking for, what the issues are, is really gonna drive where I go to find your next city manager.
All right, thank you. My next question, what characteristics, you've talked about characteristics already, what characteristics would you be looking for in a candidate that would make him or her particularly qualified for the city manager in Los Banas, as opposed to other cities?
Okay, well, I'd probably take a look, you know, your population's what, about 36,000?
About 40 now, 40, almost 41.
Oh my God, you guys are growing. So that's a thing, you know, and to me, what we'll do, and I don't rule out anyone, but you know, what you're gonna get is you're gonna get a lot of city managers who are coming from smaller cities applying, because it's a growth opportunity. That's not a bad thing, because you want someone who's got that fire in their belly and excited about their next opportunity. I'm not gonna bring you someone who's ready to retire in two years. I'll talk to you about that candidate, and you may say, you know what, we still wanna interview him or her. But to me, it's like longevity, you kind of, for someone to really implement any changes, and I think that, I'm not sure if I saw that you guys were putting together your general plan.
Yes.
And then I was looking at your RENA numbers, so I think having someone who can come in and really help the city, that's not gonna happen in two years, you need some longevity. So it's up to the recruiter, whoever you hire, whether it's me or another firm, to really dive in with those questions with candidates. Why are they interested? What, you know, how long do you plan on staying? I can ask those questions, your human resources department cannot ask those questions, but I can. Do you plan on moving? Do you plan on living in the city? And if not, where are you gonna live? Is this gonna be a commute job for you? So I can ask all those types of questions, and knowing what you guys are looking for, hey, Valerie, we don't want someone who this is gonna be a commute job, we don't want someone who's just gonna be here two years and leave. So getting that input upfront is gonna be really important when I go out and recruit for your city. If you're looking for somebody who's bilingual, that's gonna steer me in one direction. Is that gonna be the only kind of candidate I'm gonna bring you? No, but for darn sure, I'm gonna try to bring you some candidates that do. So, it really, you guys drive it, and kind of point me in the direction, and then I have at it. And I start making my calls, and I start networking for the position.
Thank you so much. Well, we very much appreciate your visit tonight, and we'll be talking to you again when we're in other.
Yes, well, I wish you guys all the best, and thank you for considering my firm.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
I'm sorry, Lucy, go ahead.
I have the next firm waiting. Just let me know when you all are ready.
Okay. Everybody can give me a thumbs up if you're ready for the next candidate, the next firm, okay? Two, three. Ready, you're good for the next one? Do you now, or you want me to move it? Okay, bring them on, Lucy.
Hello. Hello. Hi, okay, councilmembers, the next firm I'm going to introduce to you is CPS HR Consulting. And I'll let them introduce themselves.
Thank you so much, Lucy. I will start. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you here this evening. I'm Melissa Asher. I'm the director here at CPS HR Consulting for our Executive Search Unit. Just a little bit about me, I've been with the organization now for almost 17 years, and I've been working in the HR field for over 25 years. I really started my career doing, recruiting in more of the private sector. And then about 12 years in, from doing that work, as well as doing some other HR work around training and development, I transitioned to the public sector, and I've been with CPS HR ever since, running a variety of different groups here, but really focusing over the last several years on recruiting and specifically executive search. And I'm just really excited and pleased to be working with an amazing team of recruiters. We have a great team, not only of recruiters, but also administrative support that makes sure that we can deliver just exceptional service to our clients. And with me today is Pam Derby.
Hi, good evening. Very nice to meet you. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Pam Derby. I manage the executive recruitment function here at CPS HR. I'm in my 18th year at CPS. I came to CPS from Muba County, where I worked for the Board of Supervisors, and have had a long career in pseudo-public sector and public sector. I started my career actually with nonprofit lobbying associations, and so doing a lot of work at the state level. And I have been in the Executive Search Unit my entire time here, and it kind of worked my way up to now being the manager of the unit. And so, we're looking forward to your questions and being able to provide you with, hopefully, our qualifications and what you need to conduct this search.
Well, thank you very much, and welcome. This evening, each council member will ask you a series of questions, and so we will go right to it, and we will start with Councilmember Jones.
Hello. Tell me about your candidate sourcing strategy. What do you find has the highest success rate of job placement, and what platforms bring in the most applications?
So, I think it's a, you know, three-fold situation. You need to do all of them, but I think the most important thing, the number one thing, is reaching out to candidates personally. We have a huge database of candidates, and we also know when people are looking for things that might be right for a situation, what size of organization they come from, what are the demographics. So that's the number one thing, is that reaching out to people initially personally. We do an initial email blast that's probably about 10,000 across the country, depending on whether you look at candidates from outside the state or not. And then we start doing that follow-up with people that, from the information you've given us, we know fit the profile that you're looking for. And so then we start doing that follow-up and calling those individuals, emailing them, et cetera. You need to make sure that you've placed the right ads. ICMA, which is the International City County Management Association, Public CEO here in California, California City News, you know, Western Cities, or the League of Cities. And so, because that makes sure that people sometimes maybe aren't looking, or they miss something in their email. You wanna make sure you do that. And then the third spoke is the social media. We've been doing, we use LinkedIn Recruiter, which is the most robust LinkedIn platform. But the other thing is, we just post everything on all of our, on our website, and on our LinkedIn. Everyone in our, about 27 people in our organization, we are an HR organization, they pick it up when our admin send it out, and they send it to all of their contacts. So we figure we're hitting about 30,000 individuals on LinkedIn every time we post a position.
Thank you. Next question, how many recruits did you place in employment that did not work out for their employer and/or did not fulfill the time, the length of time of their contract?
So, that's, I wish I could tell you a specific number, after 18 years, but it's very rare. What I would say is over 90% of our placements are still in place after three years. But city manager-wise, last year, we had one redo, I believe. And it does happen sometimes, but those are very few and far between. And sometimes it's because, you know, there are a myriad of reasons that it happens, but usually it just turns out that it wasn't the right fit. People technically are able to do the job, but sometimes it's not a good fit for the organization or vice versa. Or it's a situation where a new council came in, and that was the platform that they ran on, that they knew they wanted to do something different, even with a new city manager. We've seen that happen. So, but last year, we had one city manager, the situation that didn't work out.
Thank you. How do you measure your success to match a potential employee with an agency?
So I think it's about that percentage of people that stay, and I think it's, really, it's about three years plus. If somebody's been there for five years, that's great. Currently, I'm doing two recruitments for Stanislas County, where I did those recruitments about eight and a half years ago. And so now, we're doing them again, but it's eight and a half years later, which is amazing to me. But that's really the measure of success, and is the staff happy, you know, are things moving forward? I mean, it's crucial to us that, you know, obviously, we have a guarantee for a year, but it's really more about, we're a public sector agency, and we wanna make sure we've made the right, you know, we've helped you make the right choice for your organization, because it's the most important decision that you as a council ever make, is placing the right city manager.
I would add to repeat business. We have a very high percentage of repeat business. So when we work with a client, doing a placement, there's like a 75% chance that they're gonna come back and use us and ask us to help them with another search. So a very high percentage of repeat business, which to us is really important. We wanna build partnerships with our clients, we wanna make sure every placement is the one for you, that you're happy with that placement, but ideally, we wanna help continuing to support you in your recruitment needs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. We'll move now to our next council member, and that's Councilmember Lambert.
Good evening. My first question is, I have read your recruitment strategy. I want you to give me one of your best reasons why we should go with your firm.
Well, I, number one, I always tell clients, I think it's because we are a public sector agency. Our mission is just the promise of the public sector, and... And we want to bring the best candidates so that the public sector can flourish. Most of us are all former public sector employees. I have a former Assistant Director of Parks and Recs on my team. I have a former city manager. As I mentioned, I came from Ubah County. That's, I think, the most important thing is that we are public in sector employees. And it's important to us that we place the right people. That's our mission. Yeah, we are absolutely invested in the success of your organization. And we understand that that happens through your people. And that, that's really when we talk about our mission and our vision, that's what it's all about. We don't have a profit motive. I mean, we are self-supporting. But for us, it's all about making sure that any, any entity, any public sector entity can be the best that they can absolutely be.
Thank you. And my second question is, what do you feel is your top marketing strategy? And could you give me an example?
So I, as I mentioned, I think our top marketing strategy is the personal outreach and making sure that we're contacting, you know, the people that would be the best fit for your organization. And I think we see that through, we keep track when people apply, how did they hear about it? And at least fifty percent are from our outreach. And I think that's a really high percentage that, you know, there's, you know, other ads and things. Next would be LinkedIn is the second highest and then ads in different places. But we probably, it's more than fifty percent since we've been keeping track in our ATS system. But it's still about picking up the phone, emailing people. People are electronically tethered twenty-four seven. You know, we text people, we text candidates, they text us. It's all about communication and relationships and, and reaching out to those individuals that we already know that may just be referral sources and say, I know these great people, you know, that would be great for Los Banos. And so it's really about the relationship building and reaching out and making sure that you let everybody that might be a possible candidate know and encourage them to apply and tell them all the great things about Los Banos. That's where we're presenting you and it's our job, it's incumbent on us to go sell Los Banos to those potential candidates.
Thank you. And my last question is, have you ever missed a projected timeline?
Yeah, it happens now and then. I mean, the reality is, is that we put together a very detailed timeline at the very beginning of the process and do everything we can to stick to that timeline. Typically, the only reason they slip is because of, you know, trying to get the council together or, but things happen, you know, and sometimes we need, and we need to let you know. We've, you know, we weren't going to miss this. We've had a complication. Because things happen. So yes. We're not perfect and so that happens. But we do try to put together a very detailed timeline from the beginning so we know what the dates are going to be. We want to try and advertise those dates in the brochure so the candidates know. So, and let you know from the get-go, these are, these are the timelines. We want you to agree to that. And we put everything out there in front of you so that you can see it and decide whether it works for you or not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Thank you, Ms. Derby. Now we'll move to Mayor Pro Tem Lewis.
I think Mayor Pro Tem Lewis may be on mute.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Well, let me start again by thanking you and Pam for accepting our invitation today. And my first question is, how strong are your agency's internal employees? An example would be, do they practice what they preach? Do you invest in employment, in employee development and certification? And are recruiters experienced in their field?
Well, I'll maybe start this and then Pam can, can add on because this is an area I feel very strongly about. I feel that our employees are very strong. We've hired them for their qualifications. As Pam mentioned, it's really important to us that our employees have public sector background so they could relate and understand the types of environments that we're expecting them to be working in. But we always invest in their continuous development and we do that in a couple of ways. We have bi-monthly training forums that we put together for actually a number of our different units at CPS HR because we are, after all, a full HR, HR consulting firm. So those forums, a couple of examples is whenever there's something important happening around anything that might be employment related, we are conducting a training session on that. So when the ban the box, this has been a couple of years now, when the ban the box law was passed and we had training with our, with our group about how to handle that and what that meant and how to advise clients and what effect that had on our process. More recently, we've been focusing on diversity, equity and inclusion. And in fact, we're in the middle of putting together a training program for our recruiters around using inclusive language. We're very concerned about making sure that we're using inclusive language that is going to pull in a very diverse candidate group. There's a lot of research and a lot going on in this particular area of diversity, equity, inclusion and how the language we use may inadvertently inhibit someone from coming into the pool. So that's an example of a training class we have coming up. We also do regular mentoring and training. And I have to say Pam has been tremendous on our team in doing that. You heard about her longevity with our organization and she does manage the recruiter. So she works a smaller number of recruitments so that she can then work personally with them and mentor and coach them as they're, you know, they all, we're all, we always learn every day, right? They're experienced, but there's all kinds of situations and different things that occur in the work environment and the political environment. And so we want to make sure that we're continuing to develop our employees. Pam, anything you might add?
So what I would add and, uh, vice versa, Lewis, is that talking about having experience in their field, we have found that it's more important to hire individuals who have a public sector background than have a recruiting background. Because recruiting is a process. And I can teach people that process. But I can't teach people to understand the Brown Act or understand how councils and boards work. And, you know, what, what does a public works director do? What, you know, what does a park and recs director do? Those are things that take a long, long time. And we have had hired private sector recruiters in the past who were great recruiters, but the problem was that it took them a couple of years to really get up to speed because there was so much to learn about the public sector. Just board and council dynamics alone are, can be mind-boggling to people. And so I have decided, and Melissa and I have decided as a team, we're doing, we're doing our recruitment for recruiters ourselves right now. It's more important, these last team members that I brought on, they, as I said, Kylie had a public works director back, public Parks and Rec background, Anthony had city manager background, Josh Jones, who's just left us to join the Foreign Service actually, but was a former city manager as well. And it only took them six months to really get up to speed and be able to be doing recruitments. And so I would say that yes, they have a lot of experience in their field because it's in the public sector.
Thank you very much. All right. My next question is, how many candidates do you normally screen for the position of city manager?
Typically, it's about twelve to fifteen is usually where it breaks. But the reality is, is that we don't put a number on it. We've been seeing, surprisingly, we thought we, well, number one, you couldn't have told me a year ago that we could do a city manager search completely virtually, which now we've done several. And, but we're seeing robust recruitment pools again, which is interesting. We didn't anticipate that during COVID. But I think, I think it's because people are not, they're not commuting. They're not rushing from meeting to meeting and they actually have time to look at things. And I think people are seeing things come over. They have a little more time to ruminate about things. And so we're actually seeing pretty robust pools. But, and it may be that there may be twenty people who meet the minimum qualifications. And if there are twenty people who meet the minimum qualifications, we're going to screen all twenty of those individuals. We don't, we don't put a number on it. It's about who comes into the pool and who's going to fit to be the city manager in Los Banos.
Thank you. Excuse me, my last question is, can your agency back up their claims about work quality? Example, do you get, if you give subpar talent, it hurts our business and it hurts your business?
Absolutely. And I think as we mentioned previously, it's very important to us that it's the right fit and that this person is going to bring success to the organization. It's important for the employees. It's important for the council. You know, as I said, we do have a year guarantee, but that's not what it's about for us. We want it to be the right person because that's our mission at CPS. So if we're not doing that, then now we're not fulfilling our mission. And, you know, our CEO, Jerry Greenwell, has pushed that for years. This is our mission. This is our vision and this is what we're going to do. And so I think that that's, you know, that says it all. It's really more important to us that you get the right person. And we would rather, we're not going to charge you more if for some reason the first time around you don't find somebody, then we're going to keep going and it's not going to, we're not going to, it's not going to cost anymore. Because it's important for us to find the right person for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Councilmember Yamas.
Hello ladies, take a break, take a break here. What are the three most important qualities you look for in a candidate for city manager?
Well, I would say a leadership presence is important. But not one that is someone who's genuine, you know, but they have a leadership presence. They're able to, you know, speak to the community. They're comfortable in those situations and that they're transparent and honest. That they've brought a background of having a transparent communications with their councils and with the community. I think that's number one. I think number two is, on the technical side, most councils, you want someone who is good with budgets and who understands the finance piece. I very rarely have ever had a council that said, yeah, that, that doesn't really matter. We have a great finance director and so, you know, they don't have to be a budget whiz. The buck stops with them and it's typically pretty important to most councils that they do on the technical side at least bring that some finance background that, you know, they've been able to come up through the system that way. And then number three is really those intangibles that you're going to tell us when we have all of our conversations with you. So that could, you know, and that's different from organization to organization. So, but it's that, you know, thing that we call fit is really important. And so we've got to make sure that when we've had those conversations with you and with the public if we have them and with staff, that we put all of that information together into our screening questions and things so that we're bringing that information out of people, you know? Are they going to be able to come and do the job? We shouldn't present any candidates to you that can't technically do the job. But we've got to provide you with candidates that we think are going to be a fit for the organization. Because that's why people leave or you have them leave the organization. Not because they can't technically do the job.
Thank you. My last question is, oh, excuse me, my second question is, between experience and education, which do you consider more qualifying?
Experience. I, I think that, I mean, it's great. And, you know, and most people in this situation have an MPA frankly. You know, there are some that don't. But I think that experience is really the most important. That they have put in the time, that they, you know, they can come in and hit the ground running and understand an organization and know how to come in and assess an organization. That they know how to come in and say, you know, I think we need to look at, assess the organizational structure, you know? This doesn't seem to be working. They need to be able to come in on day one and look at your budget and say, okay, I think this is, this is odd. You want them to be able to ask those questions. So if people don't have that, then they can't come in and do the job you need them to do.
Thank you. My last question is, why did you choose this area of work?
So for me, I sometimes think it chose me. As I mentioned, I was at Ubah County working for the Board of Supervisors. And frankly, my husband at the time was, I live in Wheatland, little tiny Wheatland, thirty-five hundred people, was on the council and then he became the mayor. And once he became the mayor, it was a little bit of a conflict of interest because as you know, sometimes cities and counties don't get along. And so I happened to see an ad for CPS and it was still a PRS agency, which was very important to me. And, but it was, sounded really interesting and so I applied and was hired and just fell in love with what I was doing because it allowed me to stay in the public sector basically. But it was something different every day. And I learned a whole new set, you know, a new set of skills that I didn't have before. But I was also able to bring, working with the board and understanding how that, how that works to this position. And that was really helpful. And so some days, you know, we all have those days when we don't love our jobs. But when you place somebody that you know is really right for an organization, there's nothing better. And, and I always say, and you want people, I want candidates to feel like they were treated well. I mean, there's no better thank you. It's, you want the client to be happy and the candidate's placed to be happy. But if a candidate who didn't get placed, um, sends you a note and says, you know, I really appreciate the way I was treated. I appreciate the coaching that you gave me. I had a candidate calling me today from a recent recruitment that he wasn't placed, that he's getting placed in a new organization and he calls me to get, you know, feedback. That makes me feel really good. That's very fulfilling.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll move on to my questions. I have just two. Wheatland, huh? I actually know where, my father was from Gridling.
Well, my family's five generations in Ubah Sutter, Buick County.
Wow, yeah.
I'm the fifth and then my kids are six, so.
My dad moved up there in nineteen twenty-three, so. There, there's a whole bunch of them still up there. So actually, I actually know where Wheatland is and probably one of the few people. Of course, you have Anthony, you don't know, makes things a little.
Yes, we do.
More famous. My questions are more specific to Los Banos. And that's first is, how would you tailor your search for a candidate to fit the needs of Los Banos?
Well, again, that's about us doing our homework and having all of those conversations with you and deciding. I would assume, you know, the reality is, is that the demographics, you're sixty-five percent Hispanic. I would assume that you want a candidate who comes from diverse communities. Someone who has maybe, you know, has had that, you've been fast growing, has had some planning background, understands, you know, role, ag communities as well and how those things interplay. But just like they tell candidates, it's about us doing our homework. And so every situation is, is different.
Thank you very much. And on, a little more on that, what characteristics, now you talked about characteristics in this one. But would you be looking for on a candidate that would make him or her particularly qualified for city manager in Los Banos? for city manager in Los Banos as opposed to other cities?
Well, and I think I did mention many of the things that I think probably you would be looking for. Um, you know, having done this for quite some time, those are the things that I would expect to hear from you, that you're looking for, you know, for diversity in the pool. Um, you're looking for people who bring, you know, have been in organizations, maybe that in communities that have had some fast growth, um, understands the planning, um, certainly understands vegetarian constraints. Um, so I would anticipate that that would be some of the things you'd be looking for.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, Melissa and Pam, thank you for joining us this evening and we'll be in contact with you one way or another, our staff will, and we thank you once again and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Pleasure meeting you.
Have a good night.
All right, real quick, our next firm that was set for five o'clock is the firm that withdrew earlier this afternoon, but the 5:30 appointment is in the waiting room. So I can bring them in whenever you all are ready.
Okay. Counsel, give me a thumbs up when you're, when you're ready. All right.
Did I see Deborah with a thumbs up? Oh, she's saying wait.
Let her, we'll wait till we get the thumbs up. Take your time, we got time. We're ahead of schedule.
And just for the record, the firm that withdrew earlier this afternoon was Allianz Resource and Consulting LLC.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, um.
Thumbs up from Deborah, we're ready?
Yes.
We're going to bring them in?
Yes. WBC, WBCP, thank you.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi.
Hi. So the next firm for the council to interview is WBCP and I'll let the two of you introduce yourselves.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for inviting us this evening. Appreciate it. My name is Wendy Brown. I'm the president and owner of WBCP and I've been in business since 2004 and I started my career in the county of Orange, uh, working in the CEO Human Resources Department with at the time 17,000 employees and 25 decentralized departments. And I worked in the CEO, um, HR department, the assistant CEO at the time was the, also the HR director. So that's how I started my career in public sector. Uh, prior to that, I had a background in marketing and branding in private sector and came in to roll out communications as a partner with Lloyd and Tush. And then, uh, they had, they steered me towards recruitment and I thought, wow, this is marketing branding. So it was a good fit for me, it was a good fit for them. I started doing their, all of their executive recruitments. Uh, that kind of morphed into an internal, um, HR consultant role or HR recruiting role and helped out with all the hard to fill, um, and executive positions across the county. And again, I turned, turned that into my own business in 2004 and we, um, have a lot of clients in California. We've been working in less cities and counties in California. Um, and we have offices in California. We have, um, three different offices in California. Sam's going to introduce herself next. She's actually based in California. I am based out of Southern Oregon. Sam, you want to take over?
Yeah. Uh, nice to meet all of you. My name is Sam Sakman, Vice President of WBCP. As Wendy said, I'm in our Morgan Hill office, so fairly close to Los Banos. Um, I've got an aunt and uncle that have lived in Los Banos, raised their kids there. So spent some time, um, in your community. I also have a stepson and that's our halfway drop off point because he lives, uh, in Visalia. So in Los Banos, um, recently, every other weekend. And, um, I spent the first half of my career in the CEO's office at the Santa Clara Valley Water District as the CEO's analyst. So got a lot of insight into the political workings of agencies. Um, we partnered obviously as a district, we partnered with a lot of local cities. Um, so really got to gain a deep understanding of how city operations occur. And, um, prior to that, in another life, I was in the marketing world, um, doing Twitter analytics and social media. So that's something that I've brought into, um, our recruitments here, which I'm sure we'll get an opportunity to discuss that when it comes to how we headhunt for positions. Um, so that marketing background that I have and the public sector experience that I bring to the table really helps. Um, like Wendy said, we've got a well-rounded approach between Wendy and I, um, of being able to serve our clients well and getting to know your organization, obviously as much, you know, homework that we can do. Um, there's always much more to learn directly from all of you and what's going on with your constituents. So we look forward to learning more.
Well, thank you very much for, for being here with us tonight. We're going to go through, uh, the council and each member of the council will ask you a series of questions and then I'll ask you a couple of questions and, uh, we'll get to know each other pretty well here over the next half hour or so. So, uh, we will start with Councilmember Jones.
Hello. Tell me about your candidate sourcing strategy. What do you find has the highest success rate of job placement and what platforms bring the most applications?
Wendy, you're on mute.
Thanks, I just saw that, sorry. Um, so Sam, I'll go ahead and start and I'll let you take over the social media part. Um, so, uh, so, uh, as Sam and I both mentioned, our backgrounds in marketing and communications and branding before we got into public sector, we feel that that's a unique, um, strength that we have in the recruiting world. Um, so in marketing, you don't ever just do one thing, one way. So, uh, every time we have a new recruitment, we look at it from a different strategy. Um, I think there definitely is some staples for city manager recruitment that we would be considering and that's online advertising as well as email distribution. Uh, there's associations where we can get city managers for all different states. So we pull those lists together. Uh, online advertising would be the key job boards that would be around job, you know, online advertising though only gets, usually captures people who are sometimes poking around or actively seeking. Um, we also go after people who are passive seekers or people who are not necessarily seeking, but would be great candidates for you. So, uh, that's the head hard heading part of what we do. Uh, those lists I just talked about from the associations help us, uh, make phone calls and contact people. We also have a really deep, uh, database in our own, uh, system here of past applicants from different positions that might be ideal for your organization. So there's a lot of different ways to look at that. We also, um, put together really, um, attractive marketing materials that sell your organization as an employer of choice and this opportunity, um, and the opportunities that your city has that will attract the right candidate. And then the other part of that is we have a social media, uh, person. We have a person who works on the social media parts of that and that's kind of Sam's umbrella, so I'll turn that over to her.
I think social media is an incredibly powerful tool that maybe hasn't necessarily, um, been garnished entirely in the public sector recruitment world. I know it's used a lot, um, in the private sector, but what we've been doing and, um, getting a lot of access to a wide range of, uh, candidates that is free of charge to our clients because getting on Facebook and connecting with folks, um, is, has been a huge, uh, boost for us. So what we've been able to do is Facebook has, has become an area where there's groups. Um, so you may have a local community group, maybe Los Banos has one. I know Morgan Hill has a local community group where it's all residents that are interested in the, what's happening within your area. But what we've also noticed is that there's a huge untapped resource of professional, um, informal professional groups. And so, um, this really helps especially with our diversity headhunting. Um, it's an access point that gives us to a wide range of folks. Um, I think especially, you know, as a female, I'm always interested in how to, um, get more females into leadership positions. That's something that I'm pretty passionate about. There are tons of Facebook groups that, um, are all about municipal women in leadership. Um, and this gives us access to millions of people with a click of a button and building those relationships online. So it's an untapped resource that we've really dove into and especially with the pandemic, um, meeting face to face isn't, um, necessarily possible in these times. So connecting online has been huge and, um, we recently have been able to fill some pretty tough positions through those connections and are starting to see a real return on investment. Um, it's always in, um, my purview to find ways to market a position that doesn't cost anything for the client. So of course, as Wendy said, we have our traditional online advertising to professional job boards, um, but we have a whole nother reach on social media that, um, is an area that doesn't cost our community and our clients any fiscal funds.
I'd like to conclude on just one last final point, which I think is important, is that we're LinkedIn recruiters. So, um, it's a pretty expensive, um, annual fee that we pay to be LinkedIn recruiters, but their reach is great. We get to do searches by bully searches. Um, so instead of finding one candidate, we can find a group of candidates based off of different things. If you're doing a national search, it can be office certifications or title or other things. And I think that that's also been a really great, um, bonus to our success.
Thank you. How many recruits did you place in employment that did not work out for the employer and/or did not fulfill their time length of their contract?
So, uh, we have an excellent record of that. So we filled every position that we've been hired to fill. I have two, uh, I have two psychiatrist positions right now in Lane County that we've been working on for seven months. Um, it might be the one, uh, recruitment that keeps us, uh, that I might not be able to say that any longer, but, um, but to the other side of that is how long do people stay and people have stayed. Uh, we, we provided two-year guarantee for city manager and county administrator positions. So, uh, we've only had to, um, go back out and for non-city manager and county administrator positions, we provide an 18-month guarantee. And, uh, we've only had to go back out twice in my career, um, in owning my business because a candidate wasn't able to fulfill their commitment. One, it was because of aged parents, uh, they needed to relocate, they weren't able to, to fulfill their commitment. Another was, um, uh, an unsuccessful hire. They didn't work. Um, so that just wasn't a great fit. I have to say that that person I interviewed really, really well. Not very, very often do those, those folks flip through. So, uh, yeah. And we actually have had candidates fall out of references too. So, uh, we do a really good job on references. We have a third, or we have a consultant that, um, is a retired police chief that does our background reference check. So he does a really good job and it's a, it's another level away from the recruiter doing it. He gets to dedicate that time to, to sleuthing on the internet and, and really doing a great job on the background reference check, so.
Thank you. How do you measure your success to match a potential employee with an agency?
Measuring our success, uh, I would say that that's a very happy client. So, um, that is a measurement, at least immediately, um, after recruitment, that they felt that the process went well, that they were excited that it all went well and smoothly and that they felt it was, um, a great representation and inclusive and that we, uh, were able to put together a good framework that was customized for your community and your council. And, uh, those are the kinds of things that we hear from elected officials, that they're surprised how smooth it went, they're surprised at how, um, organized it was, how, uh, well we were facilitating the process. I think that that's something else we're able to do a really good job at. Um, obviously you're elected officials for a reason. There was constituents that, that wanted you there and sometimes not everybody has the same opinions. And so facilitating that process is really important. So I think we're really, really very good at that. Um, and in the long run, it's how long that person stays and whether or not they're able to, you know, to meet both their employees, constituents and elected officials both.
And I'd like to add as well that what Wendy and I are really great at is building relationships. So we fill positions and when a position's closed and someone's on board, we don't close that account and then move on to the next. We maintain those relationships with our clients. Um, our HR partners especially were checking in periodically, six months down the line, one year anniversary of that person sitting in that seat and making sure that our clients are still happy with the placement that they had. And, um, again, just continually getting that feedback from our clients. So we don't steal a position and, and then you never hear from us again until your next recruitment that you need. Um, we keep that relationship alive.
And I think there's a flip side to that too. We're, we don't just care about our clients. We do understand who our clients are, but we recognize that if we don't treat the candidate with respect and care and, and treat them with, uh, and represent your organization well to our applicants, then we're not doing 50% of our job. Um, and honestly, if we don't have, we don't treat our applicants well, um, we don't have future applicants for future recruits because people don't want to do recruits, but they know, apply for our recruits in the future. But we really do take, uh, uh, we take a lot of, we, we, we put a lot of value on the fact that we're representing your organization and we do a really good job for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, we will now go on to Councilmember Lambert.
Good evening, ladies.
Evening.
My first question is, I have read your recruitment strategy. I would like you to give me one good reason why we should go with your firm.
Well, I've already named a few. Um, I would say that if I, if I was going to give you one reason, it would be because we really care about your experience and we care about your community's experience and we care about your candidate's experience. That might be three, but it is still experience. So, um, there's a lot that goes on in a city manager recruitment. Um, and it's not just about bringing bodies to an interview. It's about connecting with your community and, and the process and recommendations and pros and cons that we give you, um, in consulting with you to help you identify the best path to move forward and then doing that. So, uh, usually there's a lot of outreach and stakeholder engagement and multiple panels. Those are kind of typical things that you'll see. And I would say the experience of all of those things that come together really make it, um, a great process. I think that the outcome, if I, if, if the one thing that I'm really looking for is that I want a really happy client at the end of the day, so.
All right. My next question is, I know we've already spoke about your marketing strategy. I, I would like to know your top marketing strategy and if you could give me an example?
So, um, so I, I talked about the fact that we, that my background's been, you know, in marketing and branding and prior to that, I was working for a printing consultant. So, you know, then there was a whole new wave of online and email and that's how you reach new people and people are, you can reach people easily. Um, I would say that, uh, the world is different again today where people's email now is filled with junk mail. And we're finding a lot of success in using direct mail. And so, um, an example of that, if you wanted me to share, um, my screen, I could show you a few brochures that we do, but we don't put our brochures in a, in a, you know, number 10 envelope. We, you know, we don't take it, we don't go down to, um, uh, so to Office Depot and print a two-page, two-sided, you know, um, eight and a half by 11 document. We put something in the mail that people actually want to grab and open and read. So I think the direct mail, um, is the number one, um, strategy that I think has attracted a lot of great candidates. And I would say maybe not a close second, but probably just as important is making those phone calls.
Thank you. And my last question is, have you ever missed a, missed a projected timeline?
Uh, well, I've been doing this for over 20 years. So, um, there's only one timeline that I actually had to push out. I think that, um, one of the other things that comes along with somebody who's got a, a strong marketing and branding background is that you've got a lot of pieces and a lot of balls that you have to put together in order to make a, um, an, and a project happen. So that's certainly something Sam and I are really good at is project management. So, uh, we have a timeline after we do our kickoff with our, our candidate, or excuse me, our client. We have a timeline put together. We already know the strategy. We already know who the stakeholders are going to be. Um, usually we get all that put together, at least the, the bulk of that, at least the framework. We, uh, sometimes have to work with internal HR to kind of.
We sometimes have to work with internal HR to kind of help us put the final pieces together if there's internal or external stakeholders we need information from. But the first thing you'll see from us, or what your HR will see with us, from us and be coordinating with you, is a timeline. And that timeline will, right away, get on your calendar and make sure it all works for everybody and secure those dates. And those are the dates we stick with. There was one time I had to push that out when I didn't understand that I had put all those things together and then right at the very period of time where I was actually reaching out to a candidate pool, there was, there was a conference and I couldn't get ahold of anybody. So it happened to be a reduced timeline. Usually, I try to bake in two weeks because of those kinds of weird things that can happen between the time you close a recruitment and the time you actually have interviews, or at least the shortlist. The client was really pushing to have things reduced, and it just got to a point where if I can't phone screen a candidate, I can't make a good recommendation. So I had to push it out by a few days. You know, those kinds of things happen. It's rare that we ever have to push out an interview date, because really, honestly, it would mess up our schedules, too. We have everything baked around our interview dates. It's, the flexible timelines might be, you know, when you actually open it, or when you actually close it, or when you actually have, well, not with an elected body, but sometimes with just, you know, a department head, sometimes the shortlist meeting, you can have some flexibility there. But with an elected body, we understand how important it is that when we schedule some dates with you, we're pushing really hard to meet them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert, and thank you for our consultants here tonight. Our next, our next interview questions will come from Mayor Pro Tim Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Wendy and Samantha, for accepting our invitation today. My first question is, how strong are your agency's internal employees? And examples would be like, do they practice what they preach? Do you invest in employee development and certification? Are the recruiters experienced in their field?
So I will take this, we're team-based. So Sam and I are the only recruiters. Well, we have one other one that does some of our hard-to-fill, lower-level entry IT positions. And she's got 40 years of HR experience, and she's amazing. She's our headhunter. She's the one that goes on LinkedIn and does all those hard-to-fill work. But we work in a team. We have a team of eight behind us, and we're in the process of hiring two more. So we have a whole team of people who work behind us, who screen the first batch of resumes, who are putting together the binder materials, who are scheduling our calendars for our stakeholder engagement. And Sam and I are the face of the organization. We're the recruiters, and we're very experienced. Sam's got a master's. I've gotten halfway through a master's. She's, three of my staff, three of my leadership team, both have, all have degrees in anthropology. And she's got a master's. Yours' master's in anthropology, too, right? Yeah, okay. And so I have a business degree and a marketing, with a marketing emphasis. And we're constantly encouraging our team to go get more development. And we're certainly sending them to, you know, opportunities for sure. One of our employees is going to be, we're going to be supporting her to get her master's soon. So yeah, I definitely am always doing that.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, how many candidates do you normally screen for the position of city manager?
So we, from what we hear, I haven't worked for other recruiting agencies, but from what we hear from our clients, they're surprised at the larger applicant pools that we get. So we regularly get somewhere between 50 to 80 applicants for an executive position like this. However, not all of those meet minimum qualifications or even meet maximum qualifications. So it's not about how many applications you receive, it's the quality of the applications you receive. So if I were to take that and say, we're usually between 20 and 30% of the applicant pool that actually we phone screen. So first, it's a paper screening process that we go through, identify folks that look like they would be closest to our maximum qualifications. And then we phone screen them. That usually is about an hour for city manager recruitments. We always try to do those via some kind of video opportunities. So probably we try to do Zoom when we can. And then we're really looking for, at that point, how, the software skills, their communication, leadership, all those things. The other thing we're doing is matchmaking. It's a lot of matchmaking, like, these are the things that, these are the opportunities/ challenges that the organization has. These are the great things about the community. This is the direction the community wants to go. Helping them identify if it's a fit for them, because the last thing we want is to bring a candidate in and have you hire them and then not last for a long period of time. So it's our opportunity to be more frank with them as well about the strengths and opportunities of every organization. We all have those, I like to, I don't like to call them challenges, I like to call them opportunities, because for the right candidate, they're going to see those challenges as opportunities. So also talking about, if they're not as familiar with the area, a lot of our communities are rural, and is some challenges for folks when we are talking rural, or temperature, or how hot it gets, or for that matter, how expensive it is, you know, in Marin or San Jose. So we want to make sure that it's a good fit, that they've actually looked at the past of housing, that they understand that the community they potentially will be moving to. And so those are all factors that we weigh in on that. Sam, did you want to add anything to that?
I don't think so. You covered that very well.
Okay. My last question is, can your agency back up their claims about worker quality? An example, if you give us some par talent, it hurts our business and it hurts your business as well.
Can we give you an example? Is that what you asked for?
Well, I gave you an example of what that is. So what I'm wanting an answer from you is, can your agency back up their claims about worker quality?
Yes. I think that goes back to, you know, how well of a fit is the, is the, you know, how well of a fit we brought the candidates forward. It's not our decision on what candidate gets selected. It's our, our opportunity is to try to be the best matchmaker and bring forward the candidates we feel is the closest match to what our client has identified as the ideal candidate. Advocate for those people at the shortlist. And then, and then allowing the people that council has selected to identify the top candidate, do that process and help you identify where those strengths are, make your final decision, and we're really good at facilitating that. But we don't pick those candidates. You do. So we are really good at that. That's what we do. We're matchmakers. So, and I encourage you to contact our references. I know we put quite a few of them in our proposals, so if you haven't had a chance to do that, we encourage you. And I think that's probably the best way to find out if what I'm telling you is true.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we will go on to Councilmember Yamas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, ladies, for being here tonight. First question is, what are the three most important qualities you look for in a candidate for city manager?
So the most important part of our process is identifying the stakeholder groups as well as you, and identifying what's the most important for you. So whatever those are, are going to be most important for us. Sometimes our clients need more guidance in some areas than others. If our client was looking for some guidance in that area, I would, you know, hit some of the key things that might be important to a community like yours. We understand that you're, have a large population of Latinos. You have, you also, so you have a very diverse community. You have your agricultural, or have an agricultural focus. There is, you know, a history, and history changing because you're turning in, you're somewhat of a bedroom community to the Bay Area. We have other communities like that, too. San Joaquin and Solano. So it's faster growing. So I think for all those things, there's certain competencies that you're looking for. But until I actually find out what those, what council's goals are and what you're looking for from a city manager, whether it be fiscal strengths, or, you know, planning, or bringing in more money, or whatever those are, we'll find that out from you. And then that would be what we would identify. If you, if our client needed more guidance, we certainly could offer that, and we would offer a list of technical expertise that most people would be looking for in the needs of your community, as well as those interpersonal strengths. And as we all know, it's usually not the technical reasons why we let go of somebody, or somebody doesn't work out in our organization. It's usually the soft skills, the leadership, execution skills, people being able to actually execute the goals and develop staff, communicate, and be available to your community as well as you. So there's a lot of things that go along with that.
Thank you. Second question is, between experience and education, which do you consider more qualifying?
So that also goes along with the last statement I made, that that really depends on what's important to you. If education or years of experience were really important to my client, my caution would be, every barrier you put in front of your candidate is one more, one more exclusionary process. So my recommendation to a client is, why shut a door on anybody? Why not just leave it open and say, hey, we're looking for these key competencies and technical strengths? We're looking for these key competencies and soft skills. We ideally would like somebody, but by using ideally, you're not saying has to be 10 years of experience or have to have a master's. But every time you put a have to, or what HR in municipalities call minimum qualifications, every time you use a strong minimum qualification, you're basically telling the candidate, don't apply, because you won't, you won't be seeing them. They don't meet the minimum qualifications, I won't be talking to them, and you won't be seeing them. So instead, I'd say, let's focus on the maximum qualifiers. What are we looking for in our ideal candidate? And that's the ceiling we try to hit. And so if I'm looking at that, and if I'm making those recommendations, I would say, if you want to have a bachelor's degree, you can say required. And if you want to have a master's degree preferred, I think that would be the best way to go. And in a world where we're trying to be more inclusive than exclusive, we can even be a little bit more flexible than that. So I would give options to council and let you know the pros and cons to it. Sam, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I would definitely agree. Oftentimes, by requiring the certain higher level of education, that may be what we're truly looking for. But I know a lot of candidates often are swayed from not applying simply because it looks like it's a requirement. I had a candidate today, we're currently recruiting for a 911 dispatch center director position, and he wasn't going to apply because he doesn't have his graduate degree. However, he's been doing this exact position in a local community nearby for 20 years. So he's got the experience that's needed. So that was a prime example of a time where I was able to talk to him and say, look, you know, it's not an absolute requirement, it's what they prefer, but they also understand that someone with that many years under their belt may not have gotten a degree 20 years ago. 20 years ago, getting a college degree or a postgraduate degree, like a master's, was not the norm. And so you don't want to screen those folks out who come from a tremendous amount of life experience into these positions, especially at a city manager level.
Thank you. Last question is, why did you choose this area of work?
So I was working, I was working very late hours to 3:00 in the morning, and I was going to start a family, so I was looking for work-life balance. And I accidentally fell into public sector. But I quickly learned that I was made for public sector. I always felt that I wanted, I want to give back. And I found that actually, being able to do that through work, not just in nonprofit or other areas. You know, initially, I was working on kind of marketing and communications, because we were rolling out a new performance incentive program in the county, and I was kind of the internal person, excuse me, implementing Delight 2's plan. And then I was executing the, you know, getting the training done for 17,000 employees within 12 months, and I was coordinating that. But when I was handed a recruitment, I was creative. I think I was thinking outside the box. I did something different than anybody had done before. And that morphed into redoing how recruitments were done at the county, even to the point where I was a leader on a team, a committee that changed the selection rules for the county, and trained the recruiters on how to do recruiting differently. And that was in the early 90s with regards to, you know, the internet kind of just becoming the first thing, instead of just posting things on OC register, it was, hey, you need to strategically think about where these candidates are and how do you reach them? So where's your target audience and how do you get them? Right? So, and then it was training people on competencies. So instead of just posting a job announcement, it's like, who's the ideal candidate? Go talk to the hiring authority, because what their ideal candidate was two years ago may not be the same candidate today, even though it's the same job description. So it was doing a lot of that kind of training, and that was probably what was motivating me. I like to change, I like to see change happen. I like to improve things. That was something that I really, really liked. And I like to kind of buff the system a little bit. Younger, I'm much more savvy about it today, but I like to kind of help people see that things can be done a little bit easier. And so that's what motivated me then. Over the last 10 to 15 years, I would say, more and more, I realize how much my heart's really into serving public sector. And while I'm not a public sector employee any longer, I really feel like I'm doing something for communities. I'm helping people hire people who are serving people. And I know the importance of that, and that fulfills me on a lot of levels. And we could, we could do this job in private sector and not have to deal with a lot of things that, that some people don't necessarily like to deal with in public sector. And honestly, that part of it, the people part of it, actually is the thing that I find challenging for myself. I know how to do recruitments. I know how to reach target audience. I know how to get candidates for you. The thing that challenges me today is making that, that people part of it work. And so that's what motivates me. I see that we're making a difference when I'm coming into communities, and I feel I'm making a difference by hiring great people to serve communities, to serve people. Sam, do you want to end or say anything about your?
Yeah. As I said earlier, started my career at the Santa Clara Valley Water District, working in the CEO's office. So kind of drinking out of a fire hose on learning politics and working with council members, community members, and I absolutely fell in love with it. It was about two years into my employment that I started managing the executive recruitments. We had, WBCP was one of our executive recruiters. We'd also used others in the past. And that's where I found I had this passion that I never knew existed. If you had asked me, you know, 15 years ago, Sam, do you think you're going to be, you know, an executive recruiter for government agencies for your career? I would say, no way. There would have been no way. But I fell absolutely in love with it, working at Valley Water and doing that. And I'm a firm believer in public service. That's why I got into it initially. And with managing those recruitments with Valley Water, what I found is I wanted to make a greater impact, not just with one organization, but with a multitude of organizations. So taking those skill sets and being able to use them with the City of Ospanos or all of our other various clients that we have has been incredibly rewarding. And I'm able to see changes in cities and counties and kind of going back to that relationship building. I'm able to go back to clients that we've filled positions a year ago and see how happy they are, and that gap that they had in their planning department has now been filled because the person that we helped bring on was able to fill that gap and build staff up. So just the wide So, just the wide breadth of assistance that we can provide to multiple agencies has been something that I've been incredibly passionate about.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you. My questions, now I only have two. And that, first is, how would you tailor your search for a candidate to fit the needs of Los Banos?
So, that goes definitely back to the stakeholder engagement. That would be our kickoff meeting with you, to identify that. During that meeting, we would be talking about who else should be a part of this. Not every council that I speak with knows what I'm really talking about. So, so I will bring forward some strategies and ideas about what that might look like. I can give you some examples right now. Doing another city manager recruitment, where I just did a community, a virtual community meeting. We did a survey with both staff and the community. So, those who couldn't make it virtually could have an opportunity to complete an online survey, which basically identifies the top key competencies in a recruitment. We also had a group meeting with department heads, and also had some key meetings with different stakeholder groups, individuals. It's going to be different for every community. We would give you some recommendations. Some of those recommendations would be, who do you, who do you think needs to be involved or, you know, included in this process? But you, you can't include everybody at the interviews. So, making that extra effort in the beginning at the stakeholder engagement part, to allow them to have some inclusivity, and I don't mean allow in a negative sense, but encourage them and, and hear what their thoughts are and, and, you know, incorporate that into what everybody is looking for in the ideal, ideal candidate. I give people an opportunity to participate, even though they may not be able to be included on the interviews, interview panels. So, we've done some health and human services recruitments, where we've recognized the importance of providers in the community, and how important that is, because hundreds of millions of dollars are being filtered out to nonprofit organizations. So, we've had to do a lot of, you know, interviews with that. There's other organizations where leadership was really struggling and morale was low, so we had to make some recommendations for some other areas, and other ways of, of reaching people and figuring out how to start to mend that. So, it depends on how that stakeholder engagement or that initial meeting happens with, with you and council. And, together, we'll put together a framework that works for your community.
Thank you. And my second question, similar, and you discussed a little bit on this too, and what characteristics will you be looking for in a candidate that would make him or her particularly qualified for city manager in Los Banos, as opposed to other cities?
Yeah. So again, going back to that stakeholder engagement piece, and I think I mentioned a few already that I just know from just looking online, but just because I think, you know, you're going to be looking for somebody who knows, you know, is, knows how to deal with a bedroom community, or, you know, effectively, you know, works with the challenges and opportunities that that brings, or diverse, or rural, or fast-growing. I'm not really going to know those things, those are my guesses. Again, those will be solidified in those communications that we have with you. When you say characteristics, though, those are really kind of experienced things, like what's their background and what are they bringing experientially to be able to help us be, you know, to revitalize our downtown, or something like that. The characteristics, I think, that would really make a great city manager. And I don't think I need to ask you about this, it's definitely going to be communications, it's going to be leadership, it's going to be the ability to facilitate. And, what I mean by that, facilitate that, work with council, create healthy boundaries between council and staff. And, and I would say, when I say leadership, you know, it's, it's expansive leadership, is who are they as an organizational leader, in organizational development, but also, what, how are they working with HR and your other executive leaders to make sure that your organization is thinking about succession planning and developing employees? And, and so, now, not every city manager is going to have every strength. So, I think that one of the other things we would, we typically counsel our hiring authorities is, everybody's going to come with some gaps, and it's a lot easier to deal with those gaps when you have strengths on your team. So, you've got an amazing finance director, maybe finance isn't strong, it's always, always going to be important for a city manager to have that, but maybe it's not as critical in this role, because you've got three top executives that are really strong in the fiscal part. You just really need somebody who's got this other piece, because that, all those pieces together make the puzzle, right? So, so thinking about where the strengths are on the team also helps you recognize what gaps you can actually, what, what level of risk those gaps actually are. So, if they're missing something, or they only have experience, but they could probably get up to speed, you know, if the, if the staff have strong strengths in those areas, the, the risk is low, or lower.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our questions for this evening. And, we want to thank you for coming, and...
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. We're looking forward to the opportunity to hopefully supporting your community. I, I know Sam mentioned this, but she's been in your community, but I grew up in South Bay too, so I spent most of my life in, in Cupertino-Sunny Bell. So, I was regularly going through Los Banos as well, and I used to do, we used to always, I was a camp director for the Palo Alto YMCA, and we used to always stop there on our way to different camps and, you know, have our lunches in the park, right? So, so I definitely know your community, at least from, you know, from a few years ago. Sam has much better current times, she was kind of updating me actually recently on, on Los Banos and what's changed. So, I'm excited about your community, I'm excited for you that you're in this opportunity to find a candidate that's going to help you achieve all your dreams and goals, and we hope that we get to be a part of that.
Thank you very, very much.
Thanks.
We'll move on to deliberations now.
All right.
We'll be contacting one way or another. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Lucy, do we have any other formats that we chose, or was, as far as the next steps, or is this, we're just going to move on to open deliberation?
At the last council meeting, you talked about doing a ranking order, but if you would rather do something else, if you want to talk about, maybe there's a consensus of one that you like better than all the others, if you want to talk about a little bit before you vote, or it's, it's your purview?
All right, thank you. Well, what I would like to do is, maybe, there were only three, and maybe, Lucy, you could take notes as we go here. I would ask that the council would give their, their three, if they have at this time, they're ready to go with what they think are their three top from one, their first choice, second choice, third choice. And let's see what we have as possible common ground. And also, as you make those, make those points, explain why. And then we can get a little bit of depth as to where we're going here, so we can get our best candidate for us. So, I'll go to Mr. Jones.
Thanks, Mayor. First choice would be Bob Murray and Associates. They just seem like they're no-nonsense, right to the point, they just hit pretty hard. Second one was WBCP. They had a lot of good information. I like their two-year guarantee. I feel comfortable that they probably know what Los Banos is, more than what CPS, HR consulting is. That's my last one, if I had to go past that.
All right.
If I had to go past the second, so.
Well, thank you. Very good. Mr. Lambert? I'm sorry, Brett, did you have a little more to go? I didn't want to interrupt you.
That was all, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
My first one is also going to be Bob Murray. And the way I picked it is, they were quickly to answer our questions, and actually, a very thorough answer, the answer that I was looking for. And I went with WBC, or WBCP for second. They felt, I, I felt that they were pretty educated in their field, what they were looking for. And my third is CPS.
All right. Very good, thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Okay. I have this fast cursor that just runs all over the place, and I have to chase it down. Okay, my first rank was Bob, Bob Murray. And I agree with the other council members, they were very precise in their answer, very energetic. And, I also like the fact that she and her husband are involved in training outside. And, she mentioned that her husband was in Fresno, doing some training at Fresno College, State College. So, I, I just liked her answers, and they, they fit more in line with what I would be looking for with an agency to help us recruit as a new city manager. My second choice would be WBCP. I, I think they have good knowledge, but they weren't quite as sharp and to the point as my first choice. My second, and of course, the third ranking would be CRS. And, and I, I think they were what I would consider an average recruiting agency, just based on my experience with the last two council members that we've, I'm sorry, city managers that I've been able to sit on the recruiting process. So, that's, that's how I ranked them. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Yamas?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would go Bob Murray, WBCP, and CPS. Bob Murray, same reasons, very engaged, very motivated, they were ready to start working, it seemed like. WBCP, a close second, but some of the answers maybe weren't as thorough as I would like them. And CPS, again, just seemed more of the run-the-mill type of recruiter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is going to be the easiest decision this council's ever made. I have Bob Murray first, and WB second, and CPS third. I thought Bob Murray presented very well, if we're going to have someone presenting, I thought their presentation was the, was the, I don't know, it just seemed the most engaging. And, and she knew what she was doing very well. I thought that WB was very, very thorough and knowledgeable, but not as engaging. And CPS, I thought, was very knowledgeable as well, but Bob Murray is obviously the first choice of the council. So, Chair will entertain a motion authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement for city manager recruitment services with Bob Murray and Associates.
Could I ask that you state not to exceed $25,000, please?
Very good. And with the contract, not to exceed $25,000.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make the motion as so read into the record.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Yamas, you're all seconded.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve City Council Resolution Number 6360 as read. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. And once again, we want to thank all the recruiting agencies who came tonight and did an outstanding presentation for us. Now, we'll move on to adjournment. We're going to request a motion to adjourn to 5:30 PM Tuesday, April 27, 2021, to conduct a joint study session with the Planning Commission regarding the general plan, land use element, and business park master plan. This will be held virtually and presented by the city's consultant, Placeworks. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn as read into the record.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, and a second by Councilmember Lambert, to adjourn to 5:30 PM Tuesday, April 27, as read. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously, meeting adjourned at exactly 6:00 PM. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.